Robert Pennell.
Present.
Jamie Radek.
Present.
Rachel Sims.
Present.
Steny Vitale, Justice of the Superior Court of Justice, Rachel Woodson.
Here.
And Tracy Baynkowski is present. Also present is Mr. Elvis, Village Attorney, and his associate, Mr. Kelly, and Director of Planner.
Okay, so we'll have our first public hearing. Motion up for the public hearing at 7:03 PM. For ordinance changes, general administrative changes, heavy industrial, light industrial, and office district ordinance changes, and PUD ordinance changes, signed ordinance changes as well. Motion to open the hearing. So, move to the hearing.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody want to discuss ordinances? Awesome.
Someone want to kill 11 minutes?
Okay.
Would it be all right if we leave the public hearing open and go into the meeting and then come back to it if anybody comes?
There's a second public hearing.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, open that one too. Just leave them open until after? Include them at the end of the meeting? Would there be an attorney issue to do with that? So we do it along?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so I will make amendment to my motion to open both hearings.
Okay, we do have an issue with opening the second public hearing as.
Ah, yeah, that's true. Right.
We need to wait till 7:50.
So, cancel that. Move forward.
So, I will, um, there were some concerns or some feedback. Take this opportunity over the next 10 minutes to discuss on the table, if that's okay. Rob had some concerns with the PUDs on the public hearing.
Well, can we just bring that up at the end and just let these guys?
We can't. Well, they can't go till 7:50, not this. So.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, can't we open that one early and leave it open as long as you don't close it?
No, because you'd poke it at 7:50 if you can.
Um, okay, PUD. Let me switch gears here. Um, I sent everybody some notes. I apologize that they were this weekend, but this is when I was sitting while scouts did other stuff and had time to read. But I had also, it wouldn't, well, here, I'll go back to why I pulled up Shelby, Shelby, but in talking, when we went to the citizen planner, I talked to a lot of different people from the different communities, and Shelby's was one that people talked about as being a strong PUD ordinance. So that's why I pulled it and was comparing things to it and looking to see if ours could be stronger as well. And so that's what I, I sent everybody. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. Let's see here. Oh, I'm sure you caught the spelling errors. There's, there's city versus village in there that I marked. Um, if we go to our first page, um, it says, in the very first paragraph, the word rigid is used. And I don't know how that figures as a legal term, but should we call our ordinance rigid? I don't know how that works attorney-wise, but I just found the word not to be, um, it seemed derogatory towards our own ordinance. And I guess when I think of these things, I definitely need to think more along the legal lines of the way these things need to work than, uh, I guess be a little bit more cautious and paranoid that you got to make it as ironclad as possible. And anybody stop me if you got anything else we're going along. Let's see. I guess part of what, when I read this, I find it to be, um, we talk about residential and then we talk about commercial within the same paragraph, and then we break out residential and commercial in different sections. I guess for me, overall, I found it hard to follow. When they're mixed upon, you know, each section, because I'll make an example of permitted uses talks about, um, multiple uses containing the PUD must be complementary in nature, and it talks about that must provide a complementary variety of housing in the permitted uses. And there's nothing of talk of commercial here, but then we go down to residential density, and we're talking more residential again, and then we go to mixed use, commercial. But we don't have a section that actually talks about industrial. And it is a permitted use, but we don't put any real specifics on industrial except that it can't have residential. And I don't know if I totally disagree with not having residential in the industrial if it's complementary to what that is, you know, especially the light industrial.
If I can comment to that.
Please.
Rob, I think what we're, I think the key thing we're here is mixed use, and I think that's kind of what it's been, if you glance over the mixed use aspect of that, these other sections don't seem to mix, maybe not make sense. I think what the villages, what the villages experience as a PUD has been just a residential development. You have not really seen any mixed use where you would be blending commercial and residential. So when we talk about residential density, we're talking about it in, in the aspect of either being a single-family type of development or being a mixed-use development. And the same, and we talk about the density, I mean, this first section where it says residential density basically sets the guidelines within the PUD for the planning commission to be flexible, to have flexibility in terms of the densities based upon these criteria being met. The intention is not to call out just what a residential PUD would be or what a commercial PUD would be, it would be how these elements interact together in a mixed-use development. That being said, in terms of the open space, I had some comments on your questions in terms of how that's calculated, we can talk about that, but when you get to the section on the back where it does then go to, excuse me, one second here, where it does go to mixed use and commercial PUDs, we talk about what that looks like, what, and those are, these are basically giving the characteristics of what we would like to see in those types of developments, but also gives the guidelines for the leniency or at least the flexibility that's designed to be built and negotiated between the community and the developer. Saying there is not a industrial section, we do permit industrial PUDs, but we're just basically saying that they need to follow whatever the district, schedule the district regulations for industrial is and whatever the definitions of that district are. The only restriction we're basically putting on here is that we're saying no residential mixed use should take place, generally not considered compatible uses.
Well, when we talk about preservation and common area, we include that in the residential density, but it's not listed within the mixed use, commercial, PUDs, or that little thing on industrial, so.
That's because, I think what the intent there is, is that we are, we will provide the residential bonus up to the 20% if these elements are met. If we do look in the mixed use, I do believe that there is an opportunity within the mixed use development to still, because if you're going to have residential, so you're going to have a commercial, say you end up with a development that's commercial and residential components to it.
Yeah.
The 20% would still apply to the residential side, and commercials just handle it as commercial is within the district.
So if they're in an industrial area and we're not giving?
We would not be giving any, we would not be giving any bonuses for industrial footprint size and anything. It's really just, it's just residential density that we're potentially giving an increase to.
Oh, really? So there's no, well, then what's the plus side to do with industrial or commercial mixed use PUD versus?
It really depends on how the application and the site, and that's one of the reasons that, to answer the other question, why we took the, why we decided to bring it down to a five-acre minimum as opposed to a 20-acre minimum to the developable land that's around. If someone wanted to do some infill development, wanted to combine some properties and then do something innovative, they could do that. And that's, I think that's what we're trying to at least encourage with that. The PUD is going to be applied as a tool when it's appropriate, you know, and we have the full right to either deny it or to, you know, to work with the developer to make a project go. Just a theoretical example, if you look at the triangle property that's out there, you know, we have that zone commercial right now. If a medical center wanted to come in, wanted to provide commercial services that also potentially have home care or even some type of a residential component to it, this ordinance would allow us to be able to cite that there on a smaller piece of property, minimum size of five acres, but be able to, be able to work with the developer to determine what the care period, that's going to be what the density is, and I think these different components address each of those elements.
But it doesn't encourage them to, per se, have common area or preserve anything that may be on a property if it's not included, correct? I mean, we're encouraging that in the residential, to provide common area and preservation. Why would we want to include that in a mixed use or industrial that there's? And I don't see why we wouldn't.
I would agree. I mean, that could, that could be added here if you wish to do so.
And I don't see why we wouldn't make it, even setbacks and such, maybe negotiable in order to, uh, to get that done as well, you know?
Generally, when you're talking about increasing density, like in the resident, that would, that, that's the vehicle that you would do it by. You look at the schedule of regulations, let's see, okay, for single-family too, which is be under the line zone, it's, these are the setbacks, but we can give a variance of 20, 20%, so we could go narrower lots, allow higher density, or allow, allow closer, you know, clustering of lots, create more open space. I mean, that's, I think with the 20% is built in to try to provide that flexibility.
What would happen if you do that in a commercial to give flexibility?
You could try to, you know, it could, it could be available.
I mean, the whole point of it is really to encourage development in a quicker, more flexible way, right? Is that, that's what the whole PUD basically is, I mean, they've cut short the planning for.
No, there's, there's supposed to be, it's still got through the entire site, site review process, this application process involved the same, reviews will be the same, but it allows, it allows, allows agreements to be made. I mean, there's, there's many different things that could come up that can be, could be addressed through that process.
Well, I mean, you take, like, you know, we have weathering, that's the newest plan that's up. It's a plan, they just go by the building ordinances and that's it. They don't follow their homeowners association or, I mean, if we did a mixed use or commercial PUD, it would have some kind of association attached to it, right?
Not necessarily. No, generally, I mean, generally, that is, I think that, that's part of the, that's part of the experience here is with, with the PUDs that you have, most of those were condominium ownership and a homeowners association was generated because of the condominium ownership. You could potentially have an industrial complex that could be divided as a condominium or even commercial, then that could apply, but not in all cases.
Well, I'll pause you so we can open the next public hearing. A motion to open the public hearing for Basic Metals.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, any comments from anyone's for Basic Metals? Special land use or aluminum storage request?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Patrick Mahler, address 51278 Caroline Drive, Chesterfield Township, Michigan, 48047. I'm speaking on behalf of Basic Metals. Really, we're not asking for anything with regard to a physical site change. What we're looking to do is change the dynamics of the storage and thus the use of the site. The principal operation that we want to change on the site has to do with clean baled aluminum whereby we want to provide a loading and a storage area for that aluminum. And that would be, um, there's a storage area shown immediately in front of the access drive, and there's also a truck loading area that's shown in a revised place from where it was previously approved, which kind of locked the loading doors. That's really all we're asking for at this point, Madam Chair, and we are open for any type of questions or comments you may have.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions, comments?
Before we close the public hearing, I ask?
During.
Okay. I mean, currently, this is kind of a housekeeping thing, because it's already being, being done, correct?
Uh, it's already.
The story is already happening.
That is correct.
We're cleaning up the fact that it's not done.
Oh, I, I believe, you know, Basic Metal spells that we're operating, you know, under the correct parameters. We would like it cleaned up, though, particularly with regard to where the loading and unloading is taking place, because it is, it is not in the location shown on the approved plans.
Last meeting, we had questioned, um, the, because I, the other property, which is a separate property, um, doesn't look nice. And prior to the, you know, I think while we were here, I was speaking to Jamie about it, and they could clean that up so it looks, you know, I'm not looking for investment of huge money, but to make it look clean.
I'm just going to interrupt for a second, because I do think that, and I do choose, we do need to be careful as to addressing one property.
Well, yeah, that's where my question is coming.
What address, okay.
So we're, the attorney opinion last month was that the two properties are separate properties and had to be dealt with separately. But the two properties are not fenced off as separate properties anymore. The fence has come down, and it moves between the two properties. So my question to the attorney would be, if it's being used in that manner and not being kept separate, is it still separate?
Why? That, yeah, obviously, our opinion is that it is still separate.
Even though all the fencing is going to keep?
Yes, because we're separate legal entities, okay? So one of the guys in the law, regardless, there, there's going to be a situation where you do have two separately registered businesses, and perhaps they're doing business with each other, but at that time, no matter what, they're separate parties in interest.
So even though the site plan shows a fence, and it's been removed, that's not an issue?
No. They're still two separate legal entities, two separate pieces of land, they have to be treated that way, constitutionally, they have to be treated that way. Be nice to have a fence, that'd make it real easy for everybody, but that's not how the nature of property is.
So if the property's sold and they don't have that adjournment, can we go back to the site plan and say, hey, you got to put up a fence to separate your, to separate yourself from that property? Do we still have that ability to?
Arguably, at the time of sale, it's arguable that you would have that ability.
Because who knows, that truck property, if they sold it, and it started to open up by some.
I get it, yeah, yeah.
And the fence been removed, then you're really seeing stuff, even more stuff.
I get it, yeah.
So we would, we, if we don't lose our right by, by leaving that on this plan to say, hey, you got to block off this piece of property.
I think everybody reserves their rights for the time that any sale in the future would take place. You'll have the rights to argue, we'll have the rights to argue what we want to argue, they'll have theirs, but I don't think by this action tonight you waive any.
Okay, that's my big, that's the word I'm looking for.
All right. And I will stipulate on behalf of Basic that in fact there is a sale and there is a use change. We do understand that we are subject to a new site plan review and perhaps an addition of a fence on that property if you felt it necessary.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Mahler.
Excellent.
That was my concern. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, any questions?
If you could just follow your last name for me.
First name, Patrick.
Okay, I guess we'll make a motion then to close this public hearing at 7:23.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. And we'll remain leaving the other public hearing open, or should we close that and just continue, continue the conversation under? Okay, and then a motion to close the, uh, 7:00 PM public hearing for ordinance changes for the village.
So move.
Support. All in favor? Aye. Okay, approval of the agenda. A motion to approve the agenda. Same one? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any public comments on agenda items?
Um, I guess, can we add item, uh, ordinance change? Okay, I'm good.
Senior and I.
Um, aye.
Aye, yes.
Any public comments on agenda items? Approval of the minutes dated April 2nd, 2019, does anybody have any, there was a change that I did name, or I will change that, that was a name change, I have an idea, I corrected it, but, um, there's a name change in the roll call, correct? The, of that you had, so, so, yeah. Sir, who approved the minutes as?
So, what's the point?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, to note, Rob was not.
Or again, so I just can read it sometimes.
Um, any communications correspondence workshop from anyone? Matters for consideration, old business, Basic Metals, special land use, aluminum storage, 57250, resell, discussion in action. So there's, um, the requests covered during the public hearing for the aluminum storage of the property. Anybody have anything they'd love to discuss further about the matter?
A motion to grant additional request.
Sorry, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We'll do a roll call for.
Baynkowski, yes. Mr. Pennell?
Yes. I just want in your, um, notes, the attorney opinion to be included in the minutes, so.
Good, we can do that.
No, it's not, yes.
You can give me a moment to know about.
Follow Mr. Mahler's.
Mrs. Radek?
Yeah.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
And? Rachel Woodson?
Yes.
All right.
Motion here.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Okay, to the ordinance changes, um, we'll continue the conversation that was taking place with the PUDs at this time.
So Matt, does that leave us not, does, if we don't put in the mixed use in the commercial that there's common area or there's preservation on, is it going to allow us to require those things if there's no mention of those things, at least to say, you know, the commission has the power to include those items in the, um, in the plan if it's not mentioned? If it's just not there, is it just?
It, I, I, I'm trying to think of, there's, there's so many different instances where it could take place, I'm just trying to think of a, in an instance of a, in an instance of a commercial mixed use, most likely the developer's going to come in, he's going to have a piece of land, he's going to obviously want to maximize his profit, so his first intention is going to want to increase density potentially. But if there's environmental constraints, if there's detention that needs to be left for parking, and there's going to be, each site is going to be unique, and that's one of the things that people get leverage the PUD for, those things could be requested of them. If you do act, we can provide you this. I don't, I believe that we are flexible enough, if we wanted to write it in, that it can't be written in. My suggestion is, I believe a lot of your, I like a lot of the comments that you placed out here, there are some elements that you called out from the additional requirements that are in the Shelby application, which I think in some cases are covered already in our site plan review section, but my recommendation would be, I mean, if we want to fortify this and make it the best PUD ordinance we can for the village, maybe the suggestion would be to take the work we've done here as a group, take the Shelby ordinance and potentially crosswalk it with the attorneys, and, and, and they could probably better answer those questions, because they probably had experience with other PUDs and different styles of development in other communities that we haven't had the experience. Our experience is primarily residential, a residential subdivision as a PUD. Some of these other things can be completely different, different characters.
And I'm looking for just the more protections.
And I agree, and I think the more we can put in there to not make, we don't want, we want to make it as flexible as possible, but we want parameters on that flexibility, they could maybe help, best help us answer those questions.
Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with at least cross referencing the residential mixed use in a section and those provisions that you require in the commercial mixed use and do it that way.
And Jeff has the Shelby ordinance in no time, if you could, you know, cutor it to you.
Please send it to us absolutely.
Because I'm sure you know, well, I know you know, because you've been sitting there when I've come to.
We don't, yeah.
To comment on the PUD situation.
Right.
I don't, I'm looking, looking not to have a repeat, and I'm also looking for, I think that the PUD could be used more here, especially downtown. I want it to be a nice tight ordinance that, hey, it's there, we can use this, we can help you, we can do this quick and fast versus, you know, maybe something else if you've got to do.
I think that's, that's the intent of having it, is to, is to give us another tool that we can pull out and say, okay, if you're trying to do this and it doesn't fit our rigid zone, maybe we can make this work in the downtown or on these four properties, you know? That's why I think we want to make it smaller, more flexible, so. I will forward those on your comments and all the notes on to Sean.
Okay, with that, then we have the ordinance changes to forward to council, which, I'll give the list there, minus beauty, it includes a sign ordinance, the administrative changes, light industrial, heavy industrial, sorry, I'm trying to pull it up from last month. Am I missing anything there?
No, I believe you have them all. The general administrative, heavy, light, and industrial change to the district schedule regulations, we're going to hold back on the planned unit development, and then we have the sign ordinance.
Okay, I think what we should do is, he still needs to go to council. I know that as far as code enforcement goes, he's waiting on a sign ordinance to start doing enforcement and such. We partially send this to council, and we hold back the PUD, is my thoughts.
Is that your motion?
Um, it can be, yes. So will, motion to send all of the ordinance councils for final approval excluding the PUD ordinance?
Second for discussion. In the sign ordinance, we have the administrator portion approving the sign.
Correct.
I don't know if everybody drove up, I'm going to make an example of Basic Metals, because they were just here, and, you know, if you drove by there. I'm going to guess that the Basic Metals sign that was sitting on the front of that building, made out of scrap metal laying around, was not, there wasn't no permit pulled, and I had talked to Jamie about it today to get that information, neither one of us were able to get that, that info. But I, I think unfortunately, through the administrator. But I, I think unfortunately through the administrator, certain things just fall behind on these. I think it should come to planning to approve. And also, I think more, more eyes help stop problems, that's my test sense. I don't like to echo through just the administrator, whoever that may be. Even if you like the one we got now, we might end up with like one that we used to have. That's all I got.
And do you think that we're, you know, we, we do know about an active code enforcement officer who will be looking at those things? In regards to basic, I, I have no idea how long the sign has been up, so I think that's problematic. Just, it's been there, we missed the boat, we've missed the boat.
And we as the planning commission don't get to see that the, the boat was even in the water, because we don't get notification that, oh, we got a sign coming here. So there's no oversight except for maybe one person, um, that may or may not, and if we see a sign go up, we can go, well, is that, that proper? And then after the signs are all up, it's problematic to get it fixed or changed or without hardship or cost.
If, if, if I can add, just the, the spirit of why, the reason we did that is because as we codify the sign ordinance, we looked at it from the standpoint of this, signs are of certain size, they can give a certain message, if they don't meet those requirements, you either have to approve them or you don't approve them. So there's not a lot of wriggle room with signs, other than the fact that we do give the planning commission the right to, um, talk about materials and landscaping around a monument. And then we've also reserved within that case, then the administrative would kick it back to plan. Um, in the case of the basic metal signs, or in the case of any lack of informed sign, I might not be in the community, my argument would be, I'm not here to argue this, it's your guys to decide. Um, we, that was gonna happen, if the fact that we wanted to come to planning isn't gonna change anything, the person's still gonna put that sign, it's still an enforcement issue. So, once they were cited, we would hope that we would follow through with that, the sign would come down, and then they would, and they would come in and pull the permits and do it properly through the administrator. But us having oversight doesn't really fix that problem. I think we're just looking at it as, as a means to potentially streamline the development process, a lot of other communities are doing that. Um, other community, I know, this is, this is an example, when it comes to industrial zoning, it's pretty cut and dry, certain sized building, not certain sized setbacks. A lot of communities are going to administer review on, on industrial properties as well, cause there's really nothing, not a lot to hash out. It's like, if it meets the requirements of the ordinance, they can build it. That was the philosophy.
So you're saying that automatically, anything as far as a monument sign is gonna kick back to planning regardless, to discuss landscaping and materials?
Those items should, and that can be, that can be an administrative policy that's made, it could, you could codify it into the ordinance, or it can be an administrative policy that's made within the office, that this is our procedure, if one of these comes in, if Dave gets one, it's a monument sign, he kicks it back to us. Who could add that, or that could just be an office workful procedure?
I mean, I hope, and then, and what I see with monument signs is, they look wonderful when they're all tied together with the materials used in the building and the property, and it just all looks, you know, much more professional classy than, um, not doing it. I mean, I guess if it's locked in that way, that it has to be the materials used on the building, and I guess that will definitely make a difference either way. Of course, I like to see more oversight, cause I just, more eyes in our can rate. I've just seen so many things go by that never, you know? The phrase, well, that was a long time ago, Rob, is, you know, is told to me over and over and over and over again, and it just drives me nuts.
Okay. Uh, I did have one question, we did add the, um, I just didn't check, we did add that part where it changes ownership. Um, the new owners would have to bring the sign up to our current ordinance as well.
I believe we did this.
We did, yeah.
Yep, it's correct, yeah.
Yeah, we did, we were gonna give them a ten year window into it.
Right.
After she's monitoring for the property, they have to bring it immediately.
Okay, thanks.
But at the same time, we all have to remember, like, I, there was a very good example of what you said about, we can put a lot of rules out there, it doesn't mean people, they have to choose to follow them.
Correct.
So. And we gotta choose to prosecute.
We're getting full. But we do have Dan, so.
That should be great.
There. Okay, so did we have?
You motioned and
We had a second?
I'm certainly not supportive, yeah.
Okay, repeat the motion, just, anybody else have anything else before we? Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna move all these ordinance forward to council, with the exception of the PUD.
Correct. Um, do, oh.
Yep. Uh, Rachel Watson?
Yes.
Uh, Craig Sims?
Yes.
Johnnie Radzic?
Yes.
Brad Wood, Pnel?
Yes.
And Tracy Brackowski, yes.
Okay, then we'll, if a good time for the PUD one back next month. Okay, the next was just a general discussion on the master plan, did, um, anybody have an opportunity to go through it, look at it? Maybe discuss something that they would like addressed or, um?
I've made scan my notes, but I have not
Deeply?
Deeply read it, covered it, covered it like I should have, I just got a bunch of, you know, as I scanned it, I saw things that I don't do.
Just out of curiosity, do we have more current data than two thousand and ten?
Than what is currently in here?
In here, yeah.
Yeah, yes, absolutely, there is, there is more, in fact, I think it was last month, there was a handout where we gave you, we gave you some of the more comparative table, the stuff, the data we're starting to pull together. For traffic counts, I think we had the pavement condition, uh, information, and also, uh, the base demographics. So that's, that would be based off the most current stuff.
This?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that, that's just a small portion, we, we basically are in the process of updating all the tables that are in the old report.
Okay, cause that was, I'm looking at nine years ago.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that, that stuff goes to the language of the, um, of the document, a lot of that demographic information. That specific piece you showed, um, there's a packet, I believe, right?
Yeah.
I, I got it all, but. Um, cause I was looking, cause you can resend that stuff.
Thank you, especially, I think you're not getting giddy here tonight, I'm looking back at my notes here.
Just to say, I, I get some free time and I take these guys camping and I take this stuff with me, and a lot of times it rains, like, a fair out there, and not all my stuff survives.
Ooh, then.
It's not even kidding.
So our goal for next month is just if you can make some notes, um, thoughts, if you think you have a chance to go through it. Um, we'll set a schedule, um, next month as to what we want to cover each month going forward.
Um, I also printed out the, the Lennox, since they surround us on three sides, to get their point of view, to our point of view on properties that, but, um, I haven't ready yet, but my thought was that.
That is something that should be considered, and it's a good point, I will try and get a copy of the Chesterfield forever, I'll distribute electronically.
The Chesterfield is kind of, for the most part, preset there as far as the industrial section.
We're industrial, but I think we do have, we do have some potential for residential on the other side of Ration there.
Is that what that is?
Uh, I believe it is, own, commercial with residential component, but I'm on the density that they're talking, I don't remember what it is.
Cause I remember originally Boma was talking to them about that, that spot.
That probably would've been a captive rezoning in that corner or something. But if, if I could just add, there's, the, the beginning of the document basically sets up to say that, hey, this is why we're doing the master plan, these are like the goals and objectives of it, uh, of the plan itself, but not necessarily the goals and objectives and the findings. Um, there's a lot of boilerplate, section two is, is, you know, our location, talking about environment of the, you know, community, the natural features, um, who our planning partners are, some of that stuff will change, a lot of that stuff, uh, is gonna be pretty much stayed the same. I would say that you have, if you guys are gonna focus on, the, the most important thing to focus on would be, I believe it is, starting in section five, which is the future land use plan, cause what we do is in that, what we did last time was we broke the community up into different character areas, and we also talked about transportation in terms of particular, and then also non-motorized in terms of trails, pathways, sidewalks and that. So there were some vision statements that were put out by the last group who did this, there were goals and objectives that were. Some of these may have come to fruition, some of these, looking back at them now, may seem ridiculous, and maybe need to be changed or whatever. Um, I would, I would say, focus on those elements, those goals and objectives, on what we should still be focusing on, and that can be our discussion as to how we move forward. You may read through the residential section and say, this looks good. You may look at commercial and say, we need to do some changes, you know, thinking about the Gresham Court, or in terms of what this is proposing and what you guys would like to see. Um, it is an update document at this point in time, so we're not, it's not a rewrite from ground zero, so we will be trying to incorporate as much of this as we can that's still relevant, but making changes, we'll make adjustments as we go forward. So, uh, we talked about the downtown area, um, I would seriously take a look at that, uh, reason being, um, there were, I think there were some assumptions that were made in the past that may not be true today in terms of who owns the land, who's looking to put money in development, we've seen a couple businesses that are kinda, and, you know, in terms of their stability. Um, take a look at those goals and objectives and see if those things still make sense.
Can we have any information on that property as far as development and the, whatever they call it, DEQ or, um, you know, cause it wasn't the foundry? Is that, is that property, needs to be remedi- remedied? I mean, is that?
There, there have been, there have been phase one and phase two environmental studies that were done out there, I have not seen them. Um, but I think there, what's important to note with any of these types of projects or sites like that, there's two different levels. There's, there's, there's a level that you can bring it up to and remediate for industrial and commercial use, and I believe that's taken place on the site. But the question is, is on the front part of the property, does more have to be done to meet residential standards?
That makes sense.
And I don't know what the, I don't know what the, I don't guess at what's out there. Um, being that it's in private ownership, you know, that would be something that the owner would need to come forward, you know, if he wanted to come forward to the community, we could potentially partner with him and look at those things, but you need a willing, you need a willing person there on that end.
Anything else with the other plans, Pnel?
The, um, obviously, the twenty twenty plan for an eight lane expressway down twenty six mile, what is gonna happen right next year? Is there an up to date twenty thirty or twenty forty plan, or is there any kind of projections or thoughts?
As far as I know, the county has, is has, the county department of roads is not looking at updating the thoroughfare plan, but I can tell you there's been a lot of discussion with people at the department of roads along twenty six in other communities about what is the future status of this? Cause we've all basically signed on to respect that two hundred and, I lost it, was it probably two twenty or two forty?
The two twenty plan.
Yeah, that, we're all signed on and we're holding people to that standard, so.
Yeah, that was mentioned by Jamie, says, how much money do we put into the front of basic if all that's gonna be bulldozed and a road's gonna go through there? Um, I mean, it's very logical, I mean, I, I'm not, I just want it clean myself, but yeah, how much do you put into something to that whole corridor for us? Without knowing what the future plan now that is, that it gets cleaned up and, you know?
Cause as we start from Gresham moving west, we follow that standard in terms of the gas station, Ajax, where the sidewalk is, it's all set up to that standard, so you can see what, you can see the trend.
Yeah.
You know, and Chesterfield's respected it on the other side, over in the industrial park as well, so.
But it does dice up those properties if that's what happens. But it'd be nice to know what the plan is so that, that's gonna continue, or, I mean, you just pay the thing. Um, and put that investment in it, which makes me think that, you know, either it's gone or it's
It would, it would, it would really depend upon, I mean, I think for it to be built out, and they have what they're, it would depend upon additional development, Lennox township, additional development, so you need the volume to justify it, I don't think you have the volume there.
I mean, I just assume they let it go, I certainly don't wanna live on a whole road, which is what that plan is, I'd like to see it go away, to be honest with you. An eight line, eight lane road going outside of there just sounds like, there goes the country, you know? So it'd be nice if they could take some input, go over the new plan.
Alright, anybody else? Questions, okay? Um, so we'll look for a schedule of how we'll do this and just review those sections.
Okay.
Uh, new business, non-planned report?
Uh, nothing other than what I just added to the master plan review, as you guys are taking a look at, if there's questions that come up, or if you got some comments, you would just go ahead, and that will help us to, um, put that schedule together. And we did put together an initial schedule for the master plan, which we distributed, I think when we first started talking about the process, we kind of, with all the ordinance things and that, we kind of, it's been a slow launch, and now that we have new people on the commission, I'm considering this right from zero, starting from, from scratch, so we can all bring the calendar up.
Okay, any public comments? Call from the table?
Um, I don't know, again, who went and looked at basic metals, um, but that's another example, like, uh, twenty seven aggression in that gas station where the plan of landscape is to just have a certain amount of landscaping, but you just have it kind of tossed all over the lawn without any kind of landscape around it, cause all we're requiring is the bush or the tree, and not necessarily landscaping it in a pretty way, like what we distributed this corner at, uh, Gresham twenty six. But if you look at that property again, which is a newer property that's been, um, gone through planning in the last, what, ten, eleven years, the landscape looks like junk, because it's just all these bushes and plants just scattered throughout the lawn, and the weeds growing up the side of them, and even if they maintain it, it's still a toothy. There's, there's like this circle thing of plants, it's just weird the way it's done, and I, I hope that's something that we put more into the thought of landscaping plans, um, than just, hey, put them out there without any kind of set plan around it to make it look nice. That's my test sense.
You got two dollars.
You cash out?
Uh, okay, anybody else?
Uh, I just wanted to comment that, uh, I'm, I'm not sure how many of us got punched out by a code enforcement officer.
I think all of us independently.
Okay, perfect. So I just wanted to share with the group what my reply was, it was a personal opinion, I just felt at this time, you know, he has to stick with the current ordinances because yes, these are going to council, but there's still a process before those can be endorsed, so that is what I, that was my personal opinion that I shared with them.
My feedback is going to be this, cause I got emails from Dan and some other people, is that, I, um, Dan has a, uh, I guess I should be speaking to you, a contact person on council, a liaison between him and council? Is that someone? Is it Brian?
Mark.
Mark, okay.
Um, just because as I started getting emails from different people, um, he was asking us all to do the different, same thing. I got one, you got one clearly, you clearly got one, he got one, I don't know if you two got one.
I, I think he was asking about what he, should it be closed now or should it wait, or should he?
Right, and I felt, I can't, you can't enforce the new, what we would like to see happen, there's no, he has
My concern is that we, none of us knew, and Rachel took it upon herself to do some stuff, but I could've taken it upon myself, you could've taken it, we, I think we need to streamline that to, um, and that should probably be our response, hey, you know, can you get to Brian? And let one person, whoever it may be, um, deal with it, so we're just not all, and you're, and Rachel did take it, I would say Rachel did take it upon herself to do some new, um, sheets for the office, um, sign permit arms, which are really nice, so I've left that part with her and Lori and, um, Jeff and Sean, so they're good, guys.
And I just relate our hopes, you know?
But
But nothing is done in time. But nothing is done until it's done.
And I'll share this with, with Dan as well, it's just, like, it seems like he's given us all the same task and, you know, this.
You know, I have had conversations with him about things that he saw, um, you know, that, um, he thought should be part of it, and we did cover those things in, in the ordinance.
Right.
Um, you know, you know, he has given us ten cents about what, you know, it should happen with it, and we included those things already with what he was requesting anyway, so.
But until it's passed and publicly known, I mean, we can't, I just want everybody to understand what my response was, so.
Right, and I appreciate the job he's doing, just for the record, I just feel like we need to streamline it to one person and so that we're not responding to this one thing.
And thank you to Rachel for taking care of those for us. I like it.
Um, okay, anybody else? Um, call from table? Okay, uh, motion to adjourn. Uh, seven thirty-four, all in favor?